I want to call the Planning Commission together for Thursday, September 24th, 2020, and let's have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'm glad to see we have an audience. It's much more pleasant to have an audience. Okay, welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We are doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today that did not call the reservation line prior to the start of the meeting should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link of the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247. And please enter the webinar ID of 949-4670-5136. Please press *6 to mute yourself. If you would like to make a public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press *9 to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and to assure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, I had asked for the planning director's report?
How about roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did that again, didn't I? Roll call, please, Sue.
Yes. Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. EJ, your report, please.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. Not too often I get to say good afternoon, so glad to do that this at least one time. I'm going to just go over some normal business, and then when I get done, I'm going to invite Shawna Purvines up with the Community Development Resource Agency to make a few staff introductions. So before I do that, just this last Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors met and considered the Sabre City Estates subdivision. That project was approved, just as recommended by your commission. And on the upcoming meetings with the board, October 6th, we're going to be bringing the final installment of the zoning text amendments to the board, and then the urgency ordinance, I believe I talked about that last time here, that will be going on that agenda as well to extend it, requesting to extend it for another year. And then two projects that were appealed from your commission, Katoona Residential Care Home and the Vehicle Inspection Center, that was appealed. Both those items will most likely go to the board sometime in November. For Planning Commission, our next meeting, October 8th, we're going to be canceling that meeting. And then October 22nd, we'll have a full agenda again, and most likely that will be an afternoon meeting as well. And then November 12th, I think we're going to see Shawna Purvines there doing a workshop on the housing element. And then we have one meeting in December to finish the year. So that's how things are lining up right now.
So just one meeting in November?
Well, one November meeting and one December meeting.
And one December.
And then, as you know, as we approach the end of the year, typically, things do come up, and we have asked for special meetings in the past. Right now, that's not anticipated, but I just keep that on your radar.
Okay.
So with that, if there's not any other questions, I'll have Shawna come up.
Good afternoon.
It's good. Okay. Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency. And I did want to just take this opportunity to make some introductions with some new staff that will be working on housing, because you'll be seeing them more often as they're coming to the Planning Commission. And it was a unique opportunity that they were all here today. That is not something we actually get to see as often. So I will start with our new housing specialist. As you know, Kathy Donovan retired early in the summer. And Anne Marie Novotny is our new housing specialist. And we also have a housing planner. This is going to be the trick. They're all spread out. We have a new housing planner, Devin McNally, who has joined the team here in July. And then we have two brand-new Civic Sparks fellows who will be with us for the next 10 months, one working on housing, one working with planning on the vehicle miles traveled. That is Rebecca Layes and Isabel Stewie back there. And then you may have already met Megan Schwartz. She has been here to assist with the meetings. She also does work half-time with planning, I'm sorry, with housing. And she is our ADU guru. So she is the one that our public will contact if they have any questions regarding accessory dwelling units and works on those ADU Thursdays that we now have set up. So with that, we do have a number of housing items, as EJ said, coming forward over the next four to six months. So you'll be seeing quite a few of these folks. Thank you.
Thank you, and you're welcome. All right. I will now open public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. And Sue, do we have anyone raising hands? Or anyone in the audience? We have a... If you would state your name, and you have three minutes.
Jeff Holtz. I have a question, basically. I understand it's going to be a recommendation for a continuance on the Hidden Falls item tonight. And I'm still wondering if, because it is a scheduled public hearing, if we still have the opportunity to speak to the Hidden Falls matter this evening.
I'm going to turn that over to our attorney.
Sure. There is a Hidden Falls item on the agenda, and when that item is called, I believe staff will be bringing forth a recommendation for continuance. There still will be a public comment portion during that item when it's heard. We would ask that public comment be limited to the actual consideration of whether it be continued or not, though.
So we can speak at...
There will be an opportunity to speak, right. But staff will not be doing a presentation. They'll just be recommending a continuance to a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
So to clarify, the public then can speak on, do you continue the item or not continue the item? Or are they allowed to make comment on the project?
So they can comment on the item that's being discussed, which is the Hidden Falls project. We would suggest that they provide comment on the continuance or not.
Okay. Thank you.
So in deference to the Planning Commission, waiting until October 22nd probably is a fair response then. Then rather than get up and speak at that time.
That would probably be better to...
That would be your preference.
The preference would be coming back on the 22nd.
That's what I wanted to understand. So at that, so from the continuance, many of our members, obviously, were going to speak tonight and speak also remotely. So we've asked them to defer to the 22nd. So I think that's appropriate. And then all the written testimony that has come in, and to you, you guys will carry that over till the 22nd and become part of the public record.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. So that was Placer Trails. It was one of the groups.
Yeah.
There's a whole host of groups, but yeah, yes, yeah. I assumed that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so everyone's aware of the process, the item has not been continued yet. That is staff's recommendation.
So that is...
But that's coming.
Okay. So that is a decision of the Commission then to continue.
Right. That's what the Commission will be deciding, whether or not to continue.
So I wait for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sue, does anyone else? All right. With no other comment, public comment for matters not on the agenda is now closed. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioners like to remove the one item from the consent agenda? And I don't see that. And does anyone from the public want to remove the item from the consent? So, anyone in the public? And any hands raised? Sue? Nope. All right. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioners like, oh, I'm, we're on the consent agenda. So at this point in time, would accept the motion?
Motion to approve from Commissioner Cannon.
Second.
Okay. Sue, we have a motion and a second. If you could do roll call.
I have a first from Mr. Cannon, a second from Mr. Nader. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Sam, are you on Zoom? I don't see your picture anywhere.
I am on Zoom.
Okay. We hear you quite clearly. I just didn't, typically, we see your picture on one of the screens.
Yeah, I can see it, but I can't, but I don't know what's happening.
Okay. All right. We're now moving on to the timed items, which is a public road name change from Coon Street to Raccoon Street in Kings Beach. Members of the public may now raise their hands or press *9 if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until after the presentation is completed by the staff. Rebecca Tabor, Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying, will be presenting this item. So Rebecca?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. Again, my name is Rebecca Tabor with the Engineering and Surveying Division, and this is a public road name change to change Coon Street to Raccoon Street in the Kings Beach area. Kings Beach is on the north shore of Lake Tahoe, and this vicinity map helps orient you to the, oops, grid streets. East-west running streets are named after fish, and the north-south running streets are named after animals. In yellow here is Highway 28. And we've got in red, Coon Street, running north-south. There are 14 parcels that are affected by this proposed road name change. They're indicated on the right here with their APNs and their address numbers. This is the final subdivision map that was recorded in 1926 by the Central Pacific Railroad Company. This is one of the sheets of the map. They are the, this is the entity that created the lots and roads in Kings Beach. So for some background, as you know, the map recorded in 1926. They came up with the fish and animal road names. In the past several months, we've received multiple comments from the public requesting that the county consider changing this road name. There's also been some petitions. We're aware of two, both in support of making the road name change. One of these petitions has 333 people have signed it, and the other has 157 people have signed it. So we're before you today to consider changing the road name to the original intended animal name, which is raccoon, and that is due to the offensive connotation of the word coon. County road naming policy allows the county to change road names or renumber addresses when it is deemed in the public's best interest to do so. As indicated previously, there are 14 parcels at front on or addressed off of Coon Street. One parcel does not have an address assigned at this time. So 13 parcels will change their route name to Raccoon Street. The cost to the county is approximately $4,700. That's for replacement of 28 new road signs. In Kings Beach, mail delivery is by post office box. Our Division Engineering and Surveying sent letters to those property owners addressed off of Coon Street on August 6th, notifying them of this proposed change. As of yesterday, we had received one comment in opposition to this change, but just about an hour before the hearing, we received a phone call. One other person was opposed. The previous comment in opposition was regarding the inconvenience of having to make all of the changes herself to her insurance and utilities, you know, her own changes. Deeds and trusts were cited as an expense, and we looked into that and determined that there is no need to change your deed because of your road name change. It's based on the legal description and your APN. It's no need to make a change because of a road name change there. And similarly with a trust, there's no need to make a change to your trust documents. We did receive a call today in support as well. So for public outreach, there are signs physically posted along Coon Street so that people in the area that see those can be aware of what we're proposing. We also went to the NITRAC, North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, on September 10th and presented this. The committee voted 6 to 1, one, sorry, 6 to 0. One person was absent. So it was a unanimous recommendation to the Planning Commission in favor of making this road name change. We're also here today to receive public comment. If the Planning Commission recommends to the board to make this road change, and then if the board supports it, our division would then implement the change. And that would mean sending out letters to the affected property owners, giving them 30 days to make it official. Only the name of their road changes, not their house numbers, those all stay the same. Our division would also notify all the first responders, emergency, you know, fire, sheriff, and take care of that. We also make the changes in the official county records, our permitting system, our county GIS. And then the Public Works Division or Department would go out and change all the road signs. So with this, our recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of the road name spelling change from Coon Street to Raccoon Street. We also recommend that you make a finding of exemption pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3.
All right. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from the Commission? Okay, if not, public comment is now open. Are there any comments? Anyone in the audience? No? Anyone on Zoom or on the telephone, you need to raise your hand. So far, nobody's showing up. Got one. Okay.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Nicole Sterling. I have been working on this with my community since I started back in the summer, and I just wanted to check in and say that I'm here, and we're looking forward to the change. And we're big supporters. We live right on that block as well. So we're really looking forward to this positive change for our community.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. Can you say your name for the rest of your minute?
My name is Nicole Sterling, and I'm a couple of years ago saying that I live on the front of the building, and I'm in favor of changing it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Another comment coming in?
My name is Liz Waddes. I'm a current resident of Kings Beach, California. I've lived here for over 45 years. I'm basically against the changing of the name on Coon Street. I walk that street on a daily basis. Basically, at no time have I ever looked at that sign and thought of an African-American or anything. And I see no reason for this county to go and spend money on changing all these signs. If they want to put some money out on something, they need to put a slowdown sign on like Dolly Gordon in front of the school, because people travel way too fast on these side streets off of 267. But I am against the changing of the name on Coon Street. There's a waste of money. You don't need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others? Okay. We'll give it a minute to see if anyone comes through. Anyone come through? All right. Since no one else is raising their hand, we'll close the public comment. Don't think there's any need for the staff to respond to what was said. Commission discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, to me, it's quite obvious, as the map was shown back from 1926, and as the presentation from which I said, we're referring to animals in one direction, fish in the other. My guess is, we did not hear from any raccoons regarding this, who would be the only population segment that should be offended by it. If we start down the slippery slope of trying to remove or rename anything that might be offensive to anybody, there will be no end to this. Period. It will never stop. And on that basis, and that basis alone, again, I don't think, there is absolutely nothing offensive about this. It's a common term, and it's referring to an animal. And so I just, it's, I don't want to see us heading in the direction of appeasement to anybody who chooses to be offended, because being offended is a choice. And it's just not a direction I want to see the county head monetarily-wise or policy-wise, because somebody will still be offended when they choose to be, regardless of what you change the name of the street to. And then we'll be getting continued requests for every other street out there. And I just, I don't think it's a direction that is productive or prudent for the county to head in.
Other comments? Look, like Wayne?
Yeah. I grew up along Coon Creek here in Placer County, and I was very surprised about a year ago when I heard that it stated, decided to change the name to Raccoon Creek, which, hey, that's fine. But to me, it will always be Coon Creek when somebody says something. And I, personally, I don't, like you, Jeff, I don't certainly conjure up any other thoughts other than it's Coon Creek. So, but I understand how these things can be interpreted by some people in a very negative way. So I want to be sensitive to the fact that there are people who may be hurt by this. And while I'm with you, I hate to see the county outspending money on things like this. I think it's something that we still need to be against sensitive and about this. So, and it appears that the public up there is pretty supportive of this. So I think it's something that we should move forward on it. So I am glad, unless there's further discussion, to go ahead and make a motion.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah. Well, you know, periodically, we do hear, we have hearings about name changes, and there's various reasons for it. In this case, I guess it takes a negative connotation, but basically, the majority of the residents on that street would like to see it changed. So, here with that in mind, I'd say, go ahead.
Unless there's other comments, do you want to say something?
No, I agree. I mean, I think the community has spoken. I try not to tell people when or when they shouldn't be offended, but I think I need to understand more about that. And so this seems to be a pretty clear situation to me, that the community has spoken, and I think we should just move it forward.
Okay. Unless somebody else wants to comment, I'll go ahead.
Sam, were you going to say something?
No, I'm ready to make a second.
Okay. I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of the road name spelling change from Coon Street to Raccoon Street.
And I'll second, Mr. Cannon.
Well, just as a comment, if, Mr. Chairman, if you'd give me permission, when we said the community spoken, you know, I personally haven't seen a copy of the petitions that were referred to, to know if those were residents of the Tahoe community or people visiting there from the Bay Area or other places, to know truthfully whether the community has spoken or not. And so, you know, I would ask that we keep that in mind as we...
Yes, Rebecca, I would give an answer to that.
Yeah, Rebecca, could you answer that?
I did look at the petitions, but I didn't look name by name. They're online, and you can go see how many have voted in favor, you know, how many have signed it. So they're all in support. Now, we would have to go a little deeper to figure out where they live and how many are in the basin or in Kings Beach. But NITRAC, the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, they all were in support, and they're residents up in North Tahoe.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Now, you, obviously, you communicated with all of those 14 residences along there, but you don't know whether they've responded to you. That's what you're saying.
We sent letters to all 14. We received one phone call from one of the affected property owners who was opposed due to making the changes, just having the inconvenience of having to make those address changes.
Have you ever heard from them as support, those on that street?
The others were no response.
Oh, okay.
So we have a first and a second. Roll call?
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon. So roll call, please. A vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would further move that we recommend a finding of exemption pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
First from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon. A vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
No. Oh, yes. Excuse me. Where am I going? I was expecting a no out of him. I was just doing it for Jeff.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Is this an appealable item?
No, it's going to the board.
This is a recommendation to the supervisor.
Yeah, it is a recommendation to the supervisors.
Okay. All right. The next timed item is the Billame Watershed Encroachment Conditional Use Permit Modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands by pressing *9 if you are calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on the item. This, the public comment will not begin until after the presentation by county staff, Amy Rosig. And so, Amy, at this time, if you could make your presentation. And so, Amy, at this time, if you could make your presentation.
Certainly. Good afternoon. My name is Amy Rosig with the Placer County Planning Services Division. Sorry, there we go. So the item that I have before you this afternoon is the Dialgame Watershed Encroachment. It's a conditional use permit modification. The project site is located at 9688 Clodulock Circle in Loomis. It's about one mile... Make sure I get my clicker to work. It's about one mile east of Auburn Folsom Road, and it's about a third of a mile south of Horseshoe Bar Road. And then it's about a third of a mile west of Folsom Lake. The project site's developed with a single-family residence, a garage, a little small accessory building, a pond, and a small vineyard in the front. As you can see from this aerial, all of the properties in this subdivision are developed with a vineyard. All the properties are also developed with single-family residences, with the exception of the property directly adjacent to the east, which is a 6.9 acre property, which is developed as open space in accordance with the Clodulock recorded subdivision map. So applicants proposing to construct in addition to their existing residence, as a condition of approval and as shown in the recorded map, it states that on certain lots in the Clodulock subdivision, any property that has the Folsom Lake watershed on it cannot develop a dwelling, a garage, a carport, or driveway within the Folsom Lake watershed without subsequent environmental review and approval by the Planning Commission. So the applicants requesting to modify this restriction in order to develop this addition, 180 square feet approximately would be located within the Folsom Lake watershed. This is part of an overall addition, which is approximately 5,900 square feet. So only 3% of this addition would be encroaching within the watershed. The addition also includes an addition of a 950 square foot covered patio and loggia. And it also includes a swimming pool and pool decking. And for the conditions of approval, the pool and that associated equipment is not a feature that has to be located outside of the watershed, but it's included in this request because it's an integral part to their design. So just to give you some few pictures of what the property looks like, I took those panoramic photo. This is looking out towards Folsom Lake and El Dorado County. I took this standing close to where the pool decking would be located. You can see that there's outcroppings on the left-hand side of this image, and just over those outcroppings, you can kind of see the tip of the existing residence. The property owner has a garden that's over there, and you can tell that there's a lot of open space, there's a lot of trees, and that sort of thing. This other image, the photograph on the top left-hand side is closer, a little bit closer to the existing residence. You can see these outcroppings. And this is where the covered patio area is about, approximately going to be located. And the design of it's to kind of cut around some of this outcropping area and then eventually connect in with the existing residence that's located up the hill. And the image on the bottom right-hand corner is a picture of the existing solar panels. I included this image just to give you an idea of the surroundings around those solar panels. There's a lot of landscaping and trees, and the addition is going to come to about the edge of this gravel area. So the project site's located in the Horseshoe Bar Penren Community Plan, which discusses policies in relation to the Folsom Lake watershed. So staff has reviewed the potential temporary and permanent impacts that this project may have. So some of the temporary impacts are going to occur during construction. So we've incorporated what we call best management practices, or BMPs for short, into this project. Then those would include during construction, like perimeter controls, such as like straw swaddles and fiber rolls and silt fencing, and maybe like daily spraying on the dirt to reduce dust. And some of the permanent would be, once the building has been constructed, to handle some of the stormwater runoff from rainstorms. So the applicant is proposing an infiltration trench, which would be about 75 feet long. It's going to be about two feet wide and about three feet deep, and will be located in close proximity to where this hardscape is going to be located, so that way it can treat some of the runoff from the covered patio area and the hardscape associated with that patio and the pool and the decking. So we've incorporated a number of conditions into this project to ensure that during project implementation, these BMPs will be incorporated into the building permit. And a lot of has been issued for this project, revising condition of approval number two to remove that the covered patio and loggia would be directed towards the northwest portion of the property, because this will drain towards the back of the property and would be treated by that infiltration trench. So based on that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission find this project categorically exempt from environmental review and approve the conditional use permit modification. I'm available if you have any questions. I also have the applicant, their representative here as well.
How about we hear from the applicant, and then the commission can ask both you and the applicant questions?
Hey, my name is Matthew Delagame, and I'm a property owner. So I'm here to answer any questions if you need to ask anything.
No presentation?
No, I don't have any presentation.
All right. Then at this time, does the commission have any questions?
We have... Sorry, we also have Bobby LeBeck, our civil engineer, who did the drainage plan, as well as the architect who's doing the drawings.
Okay.
If you have any questions for them.
What we'll do is, if the commission has any questions of the staff or the applicant, we'll take those now, and then we'll open it up for public comment. So is there any questions of the applicant or the staff?
I have a quick one. Can you go back to the map? Yeah, that one. Where the solar panels on there are located?
So the solar panels are in the bottom left-hand corner.
Okay.
Okay. All right. At this time, then, let's open it up for public comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so we have somebody here in the audience making a comment.
Hi, I'm Bobby LeBeck with LeBeck Engineering, and we prepared the exhibit. I just wanted to make one clarification. We kind of changed it at the last minute where we added an option for the rear pool concrete area. If they can do the drain up near the elevation of the pool, it would be very easy for them to direct it toward the front of the lot and not have to construct the infiltration trench. So you'll notice exhibit S1 has an option one and an option two. So if they're easily able to put the drains around the edge of the concrete area and direct it to the front, then they don't have to dig the... Because they're concerned about the rock outcroppings there. So if they don't have to construct the infiltration trench, if they can do that, that's just a... I just want to make that one clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the approval that we're looking at, and this is for Amy, includes both of those options, so that at that time, then... Okay.
So El Dorado.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Other public comments? Okay. With that, public comment period is closed. I think we have the response from Amy already, so discussion of the commission?
Amy, could you put the recommendation back?
There's no discussion.
No discussion, so a motion would be in order.
Make a motion if you will, homie.
Second.
You want to go ahead and make it, Jeff?
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I appreciate that, though. That we find the project categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to provisions of Sections 18.36, .050A and E, and 18.360... .070A1 of Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, and with Sections 15303 and 15305 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Class III New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures, and Class V Minor Alterations in Land Use Limitations. And we make that with the subject to the...
Arata.
Or no, that would be on the...
No, that's the second one. That'd be the second one. Right. Okay, Sam.
All right, second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
A first from Mr. Moss, a second from Mr. Cannon. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the conditional use permit modification to allow the proposed project on Lot 68, and specifically to authorize an encroachment into the Folsom Lake watershed, supported by the findings and conditions of approval stated in the staff report and is modified in the Arata.
Second.
Okay.
Has modified in the Arata.
So we have a first and a second. Roll call, Sue.
First from Mr. Moss, a second from Mr. Cannon. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a decision to approve by the Planning Commission. The decision of the commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments to the item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. Right. I believe our next time item is at 5:00 PM, so I think the commission needs to take a The petition is complete. Parks and Division staff Andy Fisher and Lisa Carnahan will be presenting the item. So it looks like Lisa, you're up. Good evening.
There it goes. There we're on. Lisa Carnahan, Placer County Parks Division. Yes, we are here tonight to ask for a continuance to the October 22nd hearing at 5:00 also. So it's a date specific and time, in order to allow your commission and the public additional time to review the staff report, review the reduced project that staff is recommending. And in the interim, we are planning to have a town hall meeting. It looks like it's been set for October 6th at 5:30. And so we will have more information as for people as that gets planned out a little bit further. But we have a... We'll be emailing everybody that's on our list, a list of almost 800 people that want to be notified. And anybody who wants... Who hasn't gotten on our list yet can contact us at parks@placer.ca.gov, and they can come on our list, and we'd be more than happy to add them. So with that, I will turn it back over to you.
A question, and this is for county council. Is the comment period still open then on the environmental document until such time as the hearing?
So the comment period on the environmental document is already closed.
All right.
That was closed, gosh, a few months ago. So at this point, the environmental document has been finalized, the final environmental impact report has gone out. So that comment period is closed, to the extent people do want to comment on the project, though they're still able to.
Okay. Right. Any questions from the commission?
I do have one question. That has not been determined where that town hall is going to be at this point. You're still working on that?
We're still working on the particulars. We just have come up with the date and time, and further information will be... We'll post it on our website.
I'm assuming that with the 800 people, there's going to be a fair amount of those folks who will want to come and hear some of the changes that you're proposing. And I'm guessing that we'll still be under the conditions that we are now, where we can only have like 25%, and they have to all be social distancing. So that may be a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, they're planning on a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So...
As well.
Yeah.
Just a Zoom meeting, or a Zoom and also a meeting similar to this?
I believe it's going to be both.
Okay.
That's what we've been talking about so far, so I'm assuming that's how it will be conducted. So that way, if anybody doesn't have availability to get on Zoom, they can come in person.
Okay. And then I'm going... Will the staff report be updated after these? Because I know we've read a pile of stuff and a lot of comments. So I'm assuming the staff report may be provided then prior to the next meeting, updating us.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Will you be limiting comments tonight on just the discussion of whether or not we are going to postpone the meeting and reschedule it? And not on the documented, and not on the merits of the project itself?
As discussed.
I can answer that, and I guess the answer is, that's the proposal from staff as a continuance. If, I guess, if that is ultimately decided by the commission, then you would have a full hearing to hear the matter and all of the pieces of the project. So I guess the suggestion would be that any comments be limited to the continuance and whether or not to continue the item. But that is a suggestion.
But I hear a but there. But we can do what we want to do.
Certainly, the commission can elect to hear comments on, yeah, I guess, whatever it changes.
I think as the chair, since there was pretty short notice that this meeting was going to be postponed, I would ask the public to limit their comments to continuance or not. But if you feel you have to make a statement, let's take it, and we'll go from there. But preferably, this will be continued, and the commission will be hearing this on October 22nd, I believe, at 5:00 PM.
That is the proposal for the commission. That we would need a motion and an actual vote on it to continue it to that time and date.
So I think at this time, that's... Unless the commission has other questions, what we'll do is open it for public comment, take public comment, and then come back for a decision on the commission. So at this time, public comment, I think we'll take those in the audience first. I see...
So, yeah, so I do have a list of folks who signed up for public comment here in person.
Oh, we'll let you...
So if you so choose, you listen to those comments first. I can read off the list, and I'll read the first three, and, you know, they can get in line, go into the podium. But first three, signed up, Jeff Holtz, and forgive me if I mispronounce your names, Eric Thompson and Mike Ludsker.
All right, so first, Jeff Holtz. Yeah, three minutes. So what we'll do for those watching online is we're going to take the comments from the public here in the commission chambers, and then we will go to those on the Zoom or the telephone after that. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
My name is Eric Thompson. I live at 6,600 Garden Bar Road for the past 25 years, and I'm here tonight to be able to speak on the proposal that was on the Planning Commission's agenda as of 7:00 this morning. I am opposed to canceling this today. I would like to be able to speak completely today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I missed my... Jeff Holtz, representing Gold Country Trails, Questrians, and Trail Maintenance Groups, and Placer Trails as well. This meeting has been a long time in coming, back over four years. Now we experienced another requested delay. Unfortunate, but understandable, given the public process here in California. understandable, given the public process here in California. Expansion of Hidden Falls is truly a legacy project for the 500,000 current residents of Placer County. So what are the facts at this point? Hidden Falls is a regional park, inspired by the county's Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program. Placer County has been experiencing a 2.5% growth rate, with the highest rates on the western slope. Hidden Falls expansion comes from the county's Park and Trail Master Plan. In 2017, the county conducted a countywide parks and trails survey. Top activities: walking, hiking, enjoying nature. Priorities: connect trail systems, additional paved and dirt trails. High priority for park funding comes from 2,000 right-in responses, multi-use trails, maintenance improvements, acquire open space. Goals: grow and leverage partnerships. County has partnered with the Placer Land Trust to obtain 2,500 acres of open space and grazing land with 30 miles of trails, all part of the Hidden Falls project. West Placer Regional Priority: expand Hidden Falls Regional Park facilities. 91% of the respondents to the survey that was conducted in 2017 strongly or somewhat support more trails and recreational access to open space. Last year, Placer Trails had the opportunity to meet with hundreds of Placer County residents, and when Hidden Falls expansion was explained to them, they overwhelmingly supported the project for open space and expanded public trails and a vision of Hidden Falls. The facts: Hidden Falls expansion is supported by the EIR. The recommended reduction plan reduces the parking by 60%, cascading all the other impacts. Hidden Falls expansion meets the county's general plan goals and legacy program. It's supported by the county's survey and the residents of Placer County. When you get the opportunity in five weeks, let's approve the Hidden Falls conditional use permit, supporting the reduced plan and recommending certification of the final EIR. Thank you for your hard work and public service, which is much appreciated by those of us who enjoy Hidden Falls and the trails. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, three commentators, Jane Wurst, Carol Salatino, Louis or Louise Frye.
I didn't hear what you said.
What's your name?
Mike Lutzker.
You're at the podium.
Good evening, Commission.
Good evening.
I am Mike Lutzker. I live on Bell Road, and I'm also on the North Auburn Mac. In the last two years, people I represent have been telling me they do not want to see the expansion of Hidden Falls or the Twilight Ride parking lot. I have not had one person in the area tell me that they are for the project. We were once again blindsided by the Parks Department with the new information only last Thursday. The two board of supervisors that we met with this week were not aware of the changes and the new information either, and they requested a continuation of this meeting to October 22. What is a rush to justice? It took around five years to approve the winery, the new winery ordinance, and Hidden Falls has a lot more consequences that can happen than the winery and brewery ordinance. Look at what happened when you rushed through the sound wall for the trap club. It turned out to be a total fiasco. The Parks Department is not doing their presentation tonight. There is not one good reason not to extend the Hidden Falls hearing to a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're doing that. Oh goodness. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jane Wurst, and I live here in North Auburn. And at the Tuesday Supervisors Meeting, Supervisor Gore, Gustafson, and Holmes all expressed their frustration and concerns regarding some issues around the Hidden Falls project. And they requested that there be a continuance of the issue at tonight's meeting. Later that afternoon, both Supervisor Gustafson and Supervisor Holmes verbally told my husband and I that they had made a request that this be continued until October 22, and they assured us there would be a continuance. Parks Secretary and Lisa Carnahan both sent me emails yesterday and basically said the same thing, and also stated that Andy would not be giving a presentation tonight on the Hidden Falls project. So I am trusting the supervisors, the Parks Division, and the process that the continuance will be granted. I would also like to point out that your packet of 535 pages, which I have gone through twice, only has about three or four pages that have to do with the new reduced plan. And it's actually a reduced parking plan. And it leaves us with lots of questions and lots of concerns. And so I'm really glad that there is a town hall meeting that's going to be happening in a few weeks. That sounds great. And then I hope to see you back here on the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Salatino. We've lived here for the past 30 years and have taught at the local junior high for quite a few years, and are retired now. We live in between the two proposed parking areas off of Bell Road, and we've seen a lot of changes here. And when that survey came out, of course, people are going to answer that they want more trails and things to hike on. But concerning, I'm concerned with the amount of money that's being spent on this project. I'm a great proponent for state parks. We have a beautiful river close by. We have trails there that we could expand. We had horses. We've trailered horses, and actually, we did, we were fortunate that we could even ride on Big Hill, where Hidden Falls is going to be put in. It's really not that attractive an area that you should spend so much money, time, and effort on expanding it. I think the area around the river is much better to put your money and effort into. There's the fire danger. There's the extra paperwork that you need to look through. But traffic, it's very, very, I mean, the roads getting in and out, Kramer and Lone Star are extremely dangerous and windy. And when you get people there who don't know the roads, I mean, personally, we saw a fellow killed in an accident on, just below our house, because going too fast and not making the turn. I'd hate to see any people, animals, and, you know, you think about the wildlife, you're going to be disturbing if you put it in. But I really think you need to continue and really look carefully at what you're proposing here for Hidden Falls. I think it's a great idea to preserve it. I'm glad that New York did it for Central Park, and I think we should preserve this land. But I don't think it's necessary for another 30, maybe even 50 years. We have areas we should expand before that. So please think carefully on this and extend it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Louise Frye, and then the last one on the list is Samantha March. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Samantha March. I live at 4215 Garden Bar Road. And I would like to at least be able, I'm opposed to the continuance, just because some of us, as we all have crazy schedules, have taken the time out, expecting to hear some more of the information about this park and the expansion. Myself and everybody I've talked to have really, really deep concerns. It seems that this is really being pushed hard, regardless of what the residents wants. We have very much concerns about traffic. If any of you know Garden Bar Road, it is, like she said, it's an extremely dangerous road. It's sometimes less than a lane wide. So, and it feels like we've not really been allowed to hear our concerns. The amount of people that is projected in the reports that were sent out earlier is just frightening when you think about what the conditions are up there. So I would like to, again, be opposed to the continuance. I love the idea of the town hall. I think we need to take a lot of time in exploring these options for this park. I love the idea of the park. I visit it. But I think there are some, we need to take time and take a step back and look at the options that we can make so that this park is around, and it's not going to be a Mecca for things going wrong out there, especially now in this environment with fire dangers and everything else that's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. You said that's the last.
Yeah, last one on the list you might check, just see if anybody else is in the room would like to speak, and then we can move on to Zoom.
All right, Sue. What's that?
Kelly, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kelly Altina. I'm a North Auburn resident off of Bell Road, and I am fully in support of the continuance and opposed to the expansion. And I just wanted to make that public record. I support, protect rural Placer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garabedian?
It looks like you're, Mr. Garabedian, there you go. Okay.
Well, this is Mike Garabedian for Placer County tomorrow. I just finished emailing a three or so page email that is with, on the Williamson Act, and with two maps attached to it. The process, really, it needs to go back to the drawing boards on the Williamson Act. It looks like it has, no one's read it, involved in it. And I talk from some experience on this. I worked for the Department of Conservation for four and a half years, interpreting the Williamson Act and reviewing proposed agricultural conservation easements. Probably the single most critical provision of the Act, which has been ignored, apparently, is that, well, a step back a second, Williamson Act contracts must be in agricultural preserves. So the agricultural preserves must be established. They can be coterminous with the Act, with the contract, or a broader area. Well, you know, there's no map of Williamson, there's a very rough, partial map of Williamson Act, some contracted lands in the original draft. But there's no draft, nothing in this, in the EIR supplement, et cetera, mapping either, especially not the agriculture preserves or the conservation easements. Now, the maps I've submitted give you a chance to compare the reduced project Exhibit A that was sent out more recently, and the Placer County Conservation Map of Williamson Act contracted land. The Act specifically says that in judging agricultural, the project's agricultural compatibility with the Williamson Act, you have to look at the impact on non-contracted lands in the area. In other words, that lands that are in the agricultural preserve. There are so many problems, it's hard to know where to start. But the most critical thing is that Williamson Act contracts and ag preserves are, they have authority under the California constitutional provision for the, for, there's a specific word, for established, let's see, what is the specific contract, enforceable restrictions. The same contract provision applies to timber production zone and to conservation easements. And the courts that have interpreted the Williamson Act have interpreted its language very strictly. I have so little time, I will refer to the fact that the county has, also that have not been read, as there is I can tell from the staff reports, there are, there's a county code provision, law provisions dealing with the Williamson Act, that define recreational uses. And it defines exactly what recreational uses, and it does not include equestrian or biking. You can quite.
Mr. Garabedian, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Well, thank you for these three minutes. I appreciate it, and I hope you will look at the memo before you do anything, and go back to the drawing boards and read.
All right, thank you. What about on the phone? All right, it appears that there are, we have one more comment from the audience, if you could come up.
Hello, my name is Grayson Elliott. Thank you for listening. Good evening. I'm new to this whole environment. I represent a parcel off of 5350 that borders the park, borders the park, and I'm just concerned about the traffic that's going to be involved with adding access to the western border along Hidden Falls. And as people have already stated, the traffic, the road there is not very friendly towards heavy traffic. I think it will pretty much ruin the environment of Garden Bar. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And Sue, was that somebody calling in? We're going hold here for just a minute.
I can put you in right now if you'd like. Hold on. Mr. Moss, can you hear me?
Different one.
Go ahead and speak. Wait a second, it's not coming through. Hold on.
You just can't put it on speaker. Can you put the headset up to the microphone?
I'm going to make it off. Want to, you want to give it a try now, Mr. Moss? No, it's not going to work. Nope, hold on.
You need technical assistance?
Yes.
Jeremy, are you listening? We need some technical assistance here. On the phone. You don't think so? Here they come. Here he comes. Jeremy to the rescue.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
All right, you're in the hearing room. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. I got confused here. I thought we would have it ruling on the continuance before dismissing my opportunity. So I am a resident here in Auburn, in Auburn Valley, and I am happy to see that there's been some reduction in the parking that would help mitigate the risk. And the primary risk that I'm concerned with is my background. I worked for a property insurance company that's been in business for 185-plus years. They started property insurance, and I've been in that position for over 25.
They started property insurance, and I've been in that position for over 25 years as a professional fire protection engineer. One of the things that we do for the people that we insure, primarily industry and commercial properties, is we do wildland assessments, look at ember attack zones, wildland areas, and I find it disheartening to see, when I, and I do enjoy the park, I do ride my mountain bike, but I recognize that the fuel load that they have there, I do see some efforts to mitigate it, but I don't think that what is being done is enough, and I also think that it is not responsible for plans to expand that model into other areas that are identified as wildland exposed, as well as in the ember attack areas where there are lots of residents around in those areas. I think that the park service, they should come up with a good mitigation plan and effectively institute it at the facilities that they currently have, and until they can demonstrate that being effective, then they can maybe, you know, duplicate that model. But for now, I think it's very grossly understated in terms of the severity and the exposure it brings to both property and potentially life. The primary responsibility of the county is to uphold the protection of property and life safety, not to increase risk and likelihood of loss. And I still have a few minutes, so I was also wondering, one of the gentlemen talked about paved trails. Why wouldn't the money be spent to go and build bike paths? We live in a hilly community, it's very dangerous. We have a large road bike community. We've got plenty of trails. We've got the ones that the other person mentioned down by the confluence. There's plenty of places to hike. There's plenty of places to horseback. There's plenty of places to ride a mountain bike, but we have no place to ride a road bike safely. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. With that, any other call? Okay, okay, we'll give a couple of minutes to, could be a delay going in. I know in the past there's a minute delay. All right, with that, then, we are going to close the public hearing at this moment in time and bring it to the commission for questions or a motion.
I would make a motion that we continue this to October 22nd of this year with the hearing at 5:00 p.m. Second.
Oh, there's new people who came in? Oh, okay. Before taking the motion, people have entered the hearing room just recently, so let me, first of all, find, does anyone want to speak that has not had an opportunity to speak? Okay, if that's the case, then move forward.
Oh, we already did.
You did, okay. Was there a second?
Yes.
All right, so we have a first and a second to continue this hearing till October 22nd. We'll hold on just a little bit.
I'd like to hear your opinion. Yes, you're welcome.
Is what?
No.
Okay, all right, we have a first and a second. Would you call the roll?
I believe that first was Mr. Johnson.
Correct.
And a second was Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, the planning commission meeting is closed and concluded and adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.